Okay, we're ready now.
Sure.
All right, so without further ado, I'm gonna open up the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees and we'll start as we always do with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where nation under God, indivisible and for which it is just a law. Uh, trustee Matt is excused tonight. We have a personal commitment, so would you please call it off?
Trustee Gifford.
Here.
Trustee Lockton.
I'm here.
Trustee Rizin.
Here.
And now I'm gonna mix things up a little bit. We had a present- a presentation scheduled for our Section 8 housing program with Joe Mastriani, but either he was way late or he's not here at the moment anyway, so let's skip now to the presentation of our Complete Streets Working Group proposal from Lisa Post. And if you guys don't know Lisa, she's the Chair of our Planning Board. She, how long have you been Chair, Lisa?
Couple of months.
Couple of months.
You go, girl.
It took me a little bit of hard questioning to get her to take over, but I, I knew she would be good as soon as she said, "I have to talk to Jenny Moon and find out what's involved and I'll let you know after doing my investigation." So that's kind of the person you want in a leadership role where they look and find out what's, what's involved before they say yes to the question. So, and they've been working for maybe the last, what, year and a half?
Yeah.
On this Complete Streets. Uh, it's more involved than it seems when you look at it. Uh, they're at the point now where they've got this action agenda that's gonna involve some other, um, uh, players in the village as well as us. And so I asked Lisa to come in and just kind of run through it a little bit and explain what it means to you guys, so that when, um, the requests come up for either some funding or some grants or whatever, you'll understand what this whole program is. So, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Lisa, and we'll-
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. Um, I know the, the Mayor distributed this to you. This is just kind of an outline at this point, but this is what we're calling our Complete Streets Action Agenda. And what we mean when we talk about Complete Streets is the concept that roadways should be designed for more than cars, especially in a setting like the Village of Scotia, so that pedestrians, um, and, uh, other non-car users of all abilities. So that includes ADA compliance, um, folks on bicycles, pedestrians, both adults and children, um, you know, people transiting the village either to move through, but also to stop and spend time within the village. And the idea behind Complete Streets is to expand the use of that streetscape to all users, not just cars. Um, and it kind of meets the goals for the village, not only for the quality of life and health and safety of our residents, but also to attract tourism and people to stop and pause in our village. That's part of our vision for our main street area particularly. So the concept of Complete Streets has been codified, uh, by the state and the federal government. If we want to get funding, um, through the state or the U.S. Department of Transportation, we actually, that, that relates to these concepts of Complete Streets, we actually have to adopt a resolution as a village, which has been done. But we also have to have sort of a planning document that incorporates those concepts and what our goals are for Complete Streets within the village. So that's what this action agenda outline is all about. Uh, we've had a working group that is primarily the members of the Planning Board, plus a few other folks from the, uh, the Business District. Um, DPW, Andrew participated and a few other people about what do we see as the needs within the village to enhance our streetscapes, um, both for transportation, non-motorized use, pedestrian use, um, and connecting these areas of the village. So we had these, um, different destinations, we called them, within the village outlined. So we have the Mohawk Avenue Business District, we have the, the park and the gateway entrance to the, uh, the village itself, plus the schools. Um, and we're trying to figure out ways to connect these, you know, not just by roadways, but by other pathways and other means. So, we tried to outline, you know, who the users of these different destinations would be, what the routes to get back and forth would be, what the deficiencies in those roads, routes are, um, and what the within destination needs are. So things like bike racks, benches, planters, landscaping, all of that stuff goes hand-in-hand within. Um, sidewalk improvements, traffic calming measures, all of those kinds of things are what can be incorporated in this plan. Um, and you probably already know that the Mayor has been working very hard at increasing sidewalks, um, on main routes to schools, um, because we want to encourage children to be safe, I mean, not only to walk to school, but to, to be safe while doing that. So, um, adding sidewalks where we don't have any, adding traffic calming measures where we feel like, for example, along Route 5, when people are coming down off the bridge and flying through the village as they do, you know, are there measures we could take in, um, putting in maybe a center median that's shown, studies have shown that tends to slow traffic down? Um, you know, altering the, the outline of, you know, the curb cut, the curb line where it comes in and out, um, or putting in meanders, other features that would slow traffic down, for example. Um, enhancing the safety at, of crossing areas. You know, we have a huge amount of foot traffic during events at Freedom Park and in Collins Park, and we obviously want people to be able to get in there and be safe while doing it. So all of these things go into that vision. Um, there's a lot of other improvements going on with the Canalway Bike Trail. Um, we sit in a fantastic spot, especially with the improvements to the bridge. Why can't we be a destination, a stop along that bikeway? We have the docks right there on the waterfront too, to attract boaters. It would be great if we could become the next stop from Waterford, for people to stop and use the amenities of the village as they're transiting the canal. Um, so we were looking at things like that, connecting to the bike trail on both sides of the river, you know, the, the end that goes through Niskiuna as well as the end that comes through the community college, you know, why can't we be a little spur? There's, there's a thing on paper for a bike trail that goes on that side of the river. It's just not completed, it's not really marked. So there's all of these things we've been working on and identifying. So I think that, you know, we've, I've drafted this outline, it's been circulated, we need to get input from the Business District and a few other people in the village. We wanna get some public input on what are the improvements people think are priorities and wanna see. Once this is drafted as our, you know, priority list, we put it in some sort of order, there would be a next step. There are pots of funding out there through the state, through the Capital District Transportation Committee and a few other places. Once this is done, we would have to pick a few projects to develop to the next step that we would have to know, how much money do we need if we wanted to improve the bike path? And frankly, that step, while the Board with, the Planning Board and the Village Board would need to have input, you know, the Planning Board is a volunteer group, you know, a lot of us are, are pretty good, but I don't think it's within our capability, um, as the Planning Board to actually cost these things out and put some design parameters to the point where we would be ready to apply for a state DOT grant, for example. So, we're gonna get us to that point, but I think we will need at some point some resources and some professional help to take a couple of these projects and actually get them ready, you know, funding ready. Um, so, I've been doing a little bit of research into, you know, what's required by, uh, state DOT and a few others, you know, if you wanna, if you wanna apply, and one of the big questions is, you need to know how much money to ask for. You need to have a reasonable expectation, you know, and I just copied, if you guys wanna take a look, I went onto the DOT website for last year's Transportation Alternatives Program Guidebook, and it tells you what you need to have in your application, and it's pretty detailed. You need design costs, you need property acquisition costs, construction costs, you know, how you're gonna get this stuff done, contingencies, account for inflation, all this kind of stuff. Um, which, like I said, there's a lot of good professionals out there that know how to do this. Um, you know, so that's, I think, something that would be needed once we get through the action agenda being completed to the Board's satisfaction and with some public input, but just to let you know that that's where we envision this going. There's a lot of plans that have already been completed through the village, the waterfront plan, the Business District Plan, and, you know, all of these various things that are just sort of sitting on the shelf gathering dust. We'd like to actually get some of them, you know, we've been saying the same things over and over again for years, some little bits have been completed, some of the waterfront improvements, but we'd really like to get a lot more of this done, 'cause I think we have some great potential within the village to, to do some improvements, both to expand, but also to serve the people that are already here. Um, so, you know, we, some of the things we talked about were the, the pedestrian crossings on Route 50, and that would require us to coordinate with the state for that road, um, as well as with Route 5, as you've probably heard, all the goings on in Glenville near the, uh, near Freeman's Bridge, you know, the planning that they're doing there, this is probably a really good time to talk to them about collaborating on getting that bike path put in while they're doing all of that work right there by the, by the, um, Freeman's Bridge area. So there's some timing issues too, that I think we would be well positioned to take advantage. And, for example, last year I went and talked to DOT about some of our ideas for the Complete Streets and the, the bike path as the bridge was being completed and all of that, and they said, "You need to be a little more ready than you are." You know, they said frankly, "You don't have enough put together to apply for money yet." So all of these grants too, just something for you guys to be aware of, all of these granting programs, um, at least through the state and the federal government, are usually matching, not only matching programs, but they're reimbursement programs. So this would allow us, if we took it to that next step of being ready to apply for funding, the village would be prepared knowing how much commitment we would have to make. A lot of times it doesn't have to be cash match, but we have to spend the money upfront and get reimbursed by the state. So, you know, if we wanted to do a $200,000 or a $250,000 project, the village would have to be prepared to front that money and then get it back from the state. So, just something else to, Capital District Transportation, once they just hand you the money, which is kind of nice, but no, the bigger ones, the bigger pots of money often require reimbursement, so that's something the village would have to be prepared to plan for, 'cause a lot of times it's gonna be a big chunk of change, capital construction isn't cheap. So, um, I think that's all I had. I'm happy to answer questions if I can, or-
I know, uh, okay.
I was just wondering, are you guys, um, aware of any other municipalities that have kind of gone through the, the grant process and actually done the work?
Yes, uh, locally Saratoga's done quite a bit. Um, City of Troy has done quite a bit. Um, statewide, there's a couple of poster children, Buffalo, uh, parts of Sir- City Syracuse, I mean, so those municipalities obviously are much bigger than we are, but they've done some pretty impressive things through the main parts of the city with, you know, putting on-street bike paths and striping, um, alternate parking configurations, traffic calming measures, you know, increasing medians. Um, you know, they really looked at a lot of their districts to say, "We have this busy corridor, plus a school, plus shopping areas, and we wanna really just slow everything down," you know, the streets people were using as shortcuts and flying through residential neighborhoods at, you know, 45 miles an hour. So, there are examples out there, I don't have them with me, but there are definitely some good examples. If you guys would like me to forward them to the Mayor, he can circulate them around, but-
Do you have any preferences for a project? Personal preference?
Personal preference, wow. Um, I think some of the stuff around the gateway is really important, just taking advantage of the entrance to the village. You know, we could be applying, the Planning Board's been sort of moaning about the way, as you're coming in, on the left side of the road, the way that, the, the, from, you know, you get past Glenn Sanders to about where the McDonald's property is currently being redeveloped, but that whole stretch on the left is just, is that the way we wanna present ourselves as a village to somebody coming in? You know, we could be seeking funds to improve that sidewalk, connect that little pocket park, you know, just, you know, we don't have to rely on the, the private landowners necessarily to take the initiative, which I don't think any of them are probably in a position to do that. But we could improve that section very nicely, I think, and I think that, that whole bikeway connection part and maybe some improvements down by the docks, you know, putting in some facilities and amenities for people down there could be a huge boost. Um, you know, and some sidewalk improvements on the, you know, like up by the high school. There should be sidewalks. There should be a traffic light, there should be a lot of things.
There should be a section of Glenville.
Yeah.
So believe it or not, a lot of boaters, uh, bring your bikes with them. So, uh, if they choose the dock at our docks, then we'd have something for them on our Kidos down there.
Sure.
They love the, because the bike path is right there, they can go either way, and it'd be perfect for them to-
Exactly, and especially, you know, Jumpin' Jacks is right there, there's some, so we already have some pieces that if we could pull it together and then we get ourselves on the Canalways map, saying there's all these facilities and amenities right here in Scotia and-
Well, I've been bringing, um, our dockage and, uh, schedule from Freedom Park, and if you could put something together, I can bring it down to the Harbor Mass of down in Waterford, because people come up-
Right.
-through the flight-
Wanna know where to go next.
And they wanna see what, what's available for them.
Sure.
I mean, we're perfect, 'cause we've got calm waters, we've got brand-new docks, we've got the bike path, we've got the park, we've got Freedom Park, so we ought to really push on that to get, uh, people to stop in.
Especially if you can say, "Hey, look, we have a grocery store right up the road. Restock while you're here."
Well, they did have the bicycle, was it the, Chris, the Hudson Bicycles? Yeah, they decided they're not going to be here this summer- Yeah, last- -because the Jewish Community Center in Niskiuna has indoor hot showers. But then again, there's a good example, we had, we had something like three to 400 bicyclists come in-
Sure.
And then they, they just went from one end of the street to the other.
Right.
Uh, you know, they visited all our restaurants, they went to the movie theater, they went down to the market, they're, they're all over the place. And the boaters are the same place, a lot, believe it or not, a lot of boaters, if you look in the back of the sterns of the boat, boats, they have their bikes, like, on, on their racks, and they're looking for a place, just like we have, that is friendly to bicyclists and have the paths they can ride on, 'cause that's what they love.
Yeah.
And we can really promote that, once you get something down on paper, we can promote it, and like I said, uh, bring it down to the Waterford Harbor and put it in their, uh, their station they have down there.
Sure.
Their public station, and people pick up all that stuff, and if they're going up the river and they say, "Jeez, place has got this, this, and this, I wanna spend a couple nights there." That's what we want.
Sure.
I, I know that the, the block between Collins Creek and, and Boston is really perilous on a bicycle.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, if we can even do something about that, uh, that's the worst place, 'cause it's commercially owned.
Even crossing from the Turf Tavern- I didn't want to make my comment.
Okay.
Yeah, a lot of that part of the city, it's people come off that bridge and they're flying-
So they don't wanna stop.
And they're on a mission.
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Roll into my stuff. So, it's great. So, it's great. Sit down, go ahead and sit down. Yeah, thank you. So, I, I just wanna make a comment, a couple of comments, and, uh, Lisa, I'm gonna ask you to tell me when I'm wrong.
You have no idea what you're at.
'Cause I haven't been, I haven't been working on this project, but I've been trying to stay informed and involved a little bit. Um, I've gotten myself on the Policy Committee for the, the CDT C this year, so I'm involved with them, um, which puts the village in a good position. But, uh, some of the things that Lisa talked about, we can do on our own. So, we're, we're going to pave the bike path this year. In cooperation with Glenville, we're going to pave our bike path this year, and that the stretch from the Village of Scotia to Freeman's Bridge Road will be complete. We're looking forward to that.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
What are you gonna do about the drainage underneath that railroad?
I think they've figured it out.
Would they have? 'Cause that's usually, even in dry times like now, it's usually filled with water.
That's the first step, and Glenville has the equipment that's going to help us get the drainage underway.
Okay, thank you.
So, so we're gonna pave our bike path. Um, Andrew is working with the Traffic Safety Committee, signage issues and getting people from that, the neighborhood around Lincoln School to the high school because of the lack of that sidewalk and the lack of handicap accessibility to people migrating toward the high school. Not the elementary kids, 'cause their parents tend to bring them, but the older kids who are bringing themselves, so we can do that ourselves. Um, the crossing at the high school has been an issue, as you know, um, that's in the process now. The, it's actually in Glenville, so they petitioned to reduce the speed in front of the high school till, to 20 miles an hour during the school time. The, the village, the town, and the school district are putting in the lighting for the crossing and the paving, we're all working together on that. Those are easy projects, they're basically, uh, either manual or engineering projects that we can do ourselves. But then we get to the bigger things. So then you get to projects that involve state highways and county highways. We don't have authority on those, and when I talk to DOT on any of those projects, including maybe a wider lane for bicycles along that stretch, or the pull-offs that I was envisioning in front of the McDonald's property, or the meridian as you come across the bridge, that median, so that the traffic calming median that would allow better pedestrian crossings, the first thing they say is, "Where's your plan and where's your study?" So they're not going to even consider an idea unless there is an engineered plan and a study that shows that those things make sense and are doable. They're not gonna waste their time talking to the village and the Mayor of Scotia, because he has a harebrained idea. So, I think it's important that this take place and put us into position to go to the CDT C and say, "We would like a study in these areas," 'cause that's what they do, and these are the things that are priorities for us. So, we're willing to do what we need to do to get this study done, to put us in place for the grants that you talked about, the reimbursement grants you talked about, to get it done. And the reimbursement grants are good for us, because we carry a healthy fund balance, so that we can afford to fund a grant and then be reimbursed as the work is done. So, financially, we're in a good position, uh, internally, for what we can do ourselves, we're in a good position, but I'm just trying to kind of illustrate what this is gonna put us in a position for, and that's in the major traffic parts of our village. Am I wrong or right about that?
No, that, that's a really good way to characterize it. I didn't realize you'd already solved the high school crossing problem, that's great.
We'll see. It's never solved until it's in place, but we'll see.
True, true.
So, any other questions or comment for Lisa and Carl? I don't know if you guys mind, Carl, he's out, he's on our Planning Board as well. I annoy them all the time, because they both work for DEC and I just can't stop asking questions, so. Okay, uh, can I ask one, one last question? What's your number, what's the next step?
I think I'd like to get that wider group of participants, sort of, to really review what I've outlined, you know, fill in places. I did that kind of almost completely off the top of my head, I mean, it was based on the notes from our first meeting, but just have people start filling in extra things, you know, don't worry about the pros, just fill in the bullets of what are our, and give me a sense of people's priorities too, 'cause I-
So one or two things, either you can invite me to your next meeting, or you can call me and we'll talk-
Okay.
And I'll give you some contacts in the bid and those areas to, to get those people on board.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thanks, guys.
Nice job.
Joe, I'm gonna skip you one more time, you guys can go if you want, or you can stay for the meeting if you want, it's up to you.
What are you talking about?
Raising your taxes.
Uh, Joe, I'm gonna skip you for one other item on our agenda, because we have some other people here from the community, and, uh, um, at this point, I'm gonna open Privileges of the Floor. So Privileges of the Floor is where anybody in the audience can speak on any topic they want, except for a topic that involves a public hearing, which is what, is Joe is here for, and I know-
Jim, I'm Jim.
Jim, I'm sorry, Jim. Uh, and, and I know that you're not here for that anyway, so, uh, at this point, I'm gonna open the Privileges of the Floor, is anyone here care to be heard on any topic other than our Six Night Program? That's your cue, you guys cue if you wanna say anything.
Ours?
Yeah?
Vote yes for the dog park.
Hearing that, I'll close the door from here.
I actually was going to say something.
Okay.
Hi, my name's Andrew Claude, I'm the Public Works Superintendent, uh, but I'm just up here now as an employee of the village. Uh, as you all know, I was out of work for three weeks in April while my youngest son, Wesley, underwent complex heart surgery at Boston Children's Hospital. It was a stressful and exhausting experience for my wife and I and our family. But the surgery went well, and Wes continues to make a strong recovery. In fact, if it wasn't for the long scar down his chest, you would never know that only six short weeks ago, to the day, Wes had just been taken off a heart-laden bypass machine after enduring a seven-hour procedure at the skillful hands of Dr. Imani. The support from my coworkers has been amazing. Andy Benesky and Kathy Buscher did a great job running the department while I was gone, knowing that I had to, knowing that I had little to worry about back in Scotia made the ordeal that much easier. The generous gift from the department heads and the Mayor helped ease the financial burden of living in Boston for three weeks, something that I saw other families struggle with while we were there. Which brings me to the main reason for coming up here. A year ago, when Mayor Casper talked to me about switching to our current high deductible health insurance plan, I had several initial reactions. As a former trustee and department head, I thought it sounded like a good move, same great coverage with less cost to the village. As an employee with a family, and most importantly, a son, who would have guaranteed medical expenses every year, including an upcoming complex and costly procedure, I was nervous. I remember distinctly telling the Mayor that I thought it was a good idea for the village, but that I thought it would affect me negatively. I suffered from what some current and former employees suffered from, and unfortunately still are suffering from, an immediate negative reaction to change, just because it was something different. I'm humbled to say that we will pay nothing out of pocket for Wes's procedure or any of his care leading up to it. Our situation may be unique, but it highlights how comprehensive and affordable our current plan is. I had no doubt that for the majority of employees, their out-of-pocket, out-of-pocket healthcare costs have decreased when compared to our previous plan. I just wish that some of my fellow employees waited to see how things would work out before rushing to judgment. I know there have been frustrations from, for some, with providers demanding payment upfront, confusion about coverage, and other small hiccups that are so relatively minor that in board, that it borders on insulting to someone like myself. While wandering around the hospital during the many hours of waiting, I saw a counter with a window, much like the one at the clerk's office. Above the window was a sign that said "payments" or, or something similar, I couldn't remember what it said exactly. And at first I was confused, didn't everyone just hand over an insurance card at the start of this process and everything was taken care of? And then I realized that wasn't the case, and we were in fact in the minority. I watched other families go through the same ordeal my wife and I did, but then have to deal with how to pay for part, or in some extreme cases, all of their child's care. These families would have jumped at the chance to only pay $1,000 out of pocket, tax-free, if you signed up for the flexible spending account, which is all a village employee in my situation would have had to pay if the family deductible was even met. It all comes down to a matter of perspective, and after what I went through with my son, I have no, I have a whole new perspective on things. My initial reaction to the change in healthcare plans was wrong, and I hope that anybody else who still opposes the change begins to realize that as well. The village is not out to get us, they're here to help us and provide for us, because we are family, and that's what families do. This is not GE or McDonald's, where important employee decisions are made solely based on the bottom line. Contrary to what some may think, we are not a for-profit business. We provide services, and personally, I think we do a really good job at providing those services. Unfortunately, Ken's the only one here. Uh, one of the benefits we receive for providing those services is excellent health coverage at an affordable cost. I hope that no one has to go through what my family and I had to go through recently, but if they do, I hope they realize what took me a while to understand. They are truly fortunate to have the level of healthcare coverage that the village has provided for us. The Village of Scotia is a special place to work, and I am grateful to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just hope none of us have to go through what you went through, so. And if anybody's wondering, Pete's son had a baseball tournament or something tonight, so he was excused. Jim was a little more honest and called me and said, "Mayor, does the Rangers play off tonight?" And that's basically-
That's a holiday for some people.
Yeah, "I'll come if you want, but I'd love to watch the Rangers," and I said, "Take the night off," so. So, thank you, Andrew, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, and so that, so that our other residents can either leave if they wish, or stay for the last meeting, I'd like to move down to item number 11. And I'm going to ask for an authorization, authorization of a resolution to authorize the use of not more than $10,000 of the Parkland Funds for the construction of the dog park as presented by our Dog Park Committee. I'll make that motion.
A second.
Any discussion? John, I know you weren't there, I don't know if there are any questions or not?
Is $10,000 enough?
Well, we'd like, we could always use more, but $10,000 would be a good start.
The budget included in their proposal was about eight, so I added another two for contingencies, and if it, if that does go over, there's way more than that in the Parkland Fund. Just for your information, and anybody else that's listening, uh, the Parkland Fund is money that was, uh, given to the village by, um, developers in the Stone Ridge, um, development, in lieu of making parkland up there. So we were given that money. The money is, is restricted to only purchase of parklands or improvements in the park program. So this is definitely what that money is there for. And once the Dog Park Committee presented their proposal last Tuesday, I think it was pretty much unanimous that this seemed like the way to, to get it done, so.
That's great.
Any other discussion or questions? Please call the roll.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Lachwood?
Yes.
Trusty Visser?
Yes.
Mayor Katsberg?
Yes. So we should have a dog park begun late summer. I know you'd like to see it sooner, but our employees who are gonna be doing the work, need to do a little bit of paving and park work, and so I can't promise you when, but ASAP, the village is gonna have its dog park.
Thank you, thank you.
So at this point, I'm gonna take, at this point I'm gonna take a breather and invite anybody who does not wanna watch the rest of the meeting to leave.
Thank you very much.
Take care, guys.
That's the department, no, no. All right, and at this point I'm gonna turn it over to Jim, who has to tell me, it's Jim every single time he comes. It's confusing.
It's Joe all over the paperwork.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I was running late. And thank you for having the hearing tonight. Yeah, so the company I work for is Josephine Mastroianni Incorporated, founded by my dad forty years ago. He retired eight years ago, and then I took over this place. So what I'm gonna talk about tonight, I'll tell you a little bit about us, I'll talk about the program we administer for you. And we've got some statistics, we've got some finances, I can take some, some questions. And then eventually I'll need a resolution from you approving our plan. So Josephine Mastroianni Incorporated, we're located in Saratoga Springs, we employ a staff of twenty, and we administer affordable housing programs. That's the business we're in, we've been doing it for forty years. And we administer more than 2,500 units of affordable housing in nine counties. And so we've worked with the village since 1977, it was one of our first clients. So what is this Housing Choice Factor Program? Well, this is HUD's major program, sponsored by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, that's HUD. And it's the major program to help the elderly, the disabled, and low-income families afford safe, sanitary, and decent housing. Now, this isn't a physical program, these aren't physical units like a public housing program, this is a voucher program. And so people who qualify are given a voucher, and tied to that voucher is a subsidy, and they can go out into the private market, and they're able to find housing that meets their needs. That's why it's called the Housing Choice Venture Program, because what we're doing is we're enabling people to have a greater choice in their housing. And we know, you know this anecdotally, but there's also science behind it. We know that if you have stable housing and good housing, you can get better outcomes in your life. And that's the main goal of the program. Additionally, we run a family self-sufficiency program, and that helps participants who want to move out of a subsidized existence and into self-sufficiency. We work with some number of participants as well in that. And then finally, we also have a homeownership program, which is, allows qualified individuals to convert their rental subsidy into a, into a portion of the mortgage payment. So that's, that's the, that's the program in a nutshell. Moving to the, dropping the statistics page. So we've been, like I said, we've been working with this since 1977, at a maximum we can help a hundred families. Currently, right now, we're helping ninety-seven families. And then with the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, we have twenty-two people in that program right now. And eleven of them, it says that they have escrow accounts. And what that means is when people in the FSS program start doing better, they get a better job, they get a raise, what we do is we take the difference in what their subsidy would have been before the raise or the new job, and we put that into an escrow account. And if they successfully graduate from the program, meet their goals, move off of welfare assistance, then they're able to access that, they're able to have that money. And so it provides an incentive to move into self-sufficiency. There is a waiting list for this program, and currently, right now, there are a hundred and sixty-three people on this waiting list. Now, this is waiting list, we also administer your neighbors up to the north in the town of Blackville. We administer their, their Housing Choice Venture Program, it's about the same size program. And so because you two have very similar borders in some areas, we do a combined waiting list. And so, so that waiting list feeds both the village and the town. When I was presenting at the town, a question that they had was, well, is, what's the distribution between town residents and village residents? And so at that time, this was about three months ago, we'd done an analysis, and as we expected, it confirmed, it's about evenly split. There's a preference system on the waiting list, and the way that works is that people who live or work within the village or the town, get a preference above people who do not live or work within the town or village. The waiting list is taking some time to get through right now. The next person we're going to offer assistance to, has been waiting since April 2nd of 2012. Just moving down the page, before a unit can enter the program, and each year annually, we perform a housing quality standards inspection. So we've done a hundred and seventy-six inspections during the last calendar year. And then finally, two more interesting things. The average subsidy of a participant in this program is $474, and their average gross monthly income is $1,203. And you can also see that the majority of folks being helped in this program are the elderly or the disabled. Now, flipping to the backside, these are just two spreadsheets summarizing program expenditures and funding provided. And so on a month-by-month basis, it says we provided this, this is what we spent. In some months, we overspend, in some months, we underspend. Just the natural volatility of administering a program like this. And we have a good reserve moving forward, so we're in a good position to be able to continue administering the program. So that's really all the presentation is, I can certainly take any questions. I know it's a lot of information.
Jim, I have one question.
Sure.
So, the program itself, does that travel with the person? So you say that we have a hundred?
Yes.
Available. Right now, you say it's ninety-seven or ninety-eight?
Ninety, yeah, ninety-seven is where we're at right now.
Okay.
Yeah, cause we're.
So if a person is a Section 8 recipient from the city of Schenectady, and then moved to the Village of Scotia, what happens then?
Okay, so that's the portability program, is what that's called. And so if somebody, so in that very case, what would happen is, we would then bill the city of Schenectady for that subsidy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So potentially, we could have a much larger number than ninety-seven in the Village of Scotia?
Yes, yes. Yep, and that's, that's, that is just, that's just federal statute that we have to require that. I, I administer a lot of programs in the area, and there are some other communities that I know that are fifty or sixty percent larger because of the ports in, that have moved into the community. And interestingly, what, the pattern we see is in these smaller communities, the folks on the native program are typically elderly, but the folks that are moving in are families, and these places have, are known to have very good school districts.
So, Jim, what's the, I don't quite understand the dynamics here.
Sure.
A three-year waitlist sounds like pretty.
It's a long time.
Pretty rotten.
Yeah.
So, is there anything could be done about that, or is there anything should be done about it, or, you know, what's the?
There hasn't been any new funding for this program since Bill Clinton was the president. And nationwide, there is a four-to-one demand to supply. And so, if there was a notice of funding available, the first thing I would do is I would apply for it, and I, well, I'd have a conversation with you and say, "Do you think we should go after some more funding?" Because we can see that there is so much demand for this program.
What does somebody do while they're on the waitlist?
They do, well, there are certain, a lot of times folks will, you know, pay the rent themselves, the full amount of the rent, and then that gives them less buying power for other things in their life. Sometimes they live with relatives.
There are other housing systems.
Any other questions for Jim? Okay, at this point now, I'm gonna open the public hearing on the Section 8 Housing Choice Venture Program. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this program?
Andrew said it's bid already.
Seeing now, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and I'll enter the motion that ends with, that the village board, the Board of the Village of Scotia hereby adopts the five-year PHA plan starting in 2015 for operation of the Village of Scotia's Section 8 Housing Choice Venture Program.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Any other discussion on this? Please call the roll.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Lachwood?
Yes.
Trusty Visser?
Yes.
Mayor Katsberg?
Yes. See you in five years, Jim, thank you very much.
We'll try to remember your name.
All right, so if my cross-outs are correct, we're at item number six, which is authorize me to sign the agreement with the Department of Public Works, as employees association, Association Regarding Summer Hours. I know you were electronically, you were sent a description of the summer hours. Andrew's proposing this year to increase it by three weeks, two weeks in the beginning, one at the end. And then he's got a second wrinkle, where the mechanic's position would be on the regular schedule still. So that puts Kathy at DPW, five days a week under normal hours, as well as Dave West, who's our mechanic, at DPW, five days a week under normal hours. So we will have a presence in the garage for normal hours the entire week.
I move we let them have at it.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Lachwood?
Yes.
Trusty Visser?
Yes.
Mayor Katsberg?
Yes. And then item number seven is to, is the resolution for the summer hours for the rest of our applicable employees. So you have them listed there, and these are the summer hours that we.
These are just the regular summer hours, right?
Yeah, this is what we do every year with the, the people that are listed there. Any care to move?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second a motion.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Lachwood?
Yes.
Trusty Visser?
Yes.
Mayor Katsberg?
Yes. Item number eight is a resolution to establish a standard workday and reporting resolution for our village attorney, which is required for retirement.
I'll make the motion.
I think we all got that yet.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion on that one? Please call the roll.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Lachwood?
Yes.
Trusty Visser?
Yes.
Mayor Katsberg?
Yes. Item number nine is authorize me to sign the June 1st renewal of the permanent workers' comp plan for the Village of Scotia at a, what is it, fifteen?
Fifty percent.
Whoa.
Tough.
Wow. It's, whack.
Tough.
What happened there?
Our claims.
We had a lot?
Mm-hmm. Jesus.
I'll make the motion.
How much else you can do, a second?
We did go out for two prices, and the other came in at eighty-two thousand, greater than, it came in at two eighty-two.
Does that change year to year? Is it, is it one of those?
It's always done claims.
Okay.
They do, it's called experience mud, and depends. Sometimes we sign a two-year contract when our renewal is low.
We can lock it in?
To lock it in, but based on the advice from our broker with this high, they offered a two-year, but we're gonna take our chances and hopefully.
Hopefully, nobody gets.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other discussion on that one? Please call the roll.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Lachwood?
Yes.
Trusty Visser?
Yes.
Mayor Katsberg?
Yes.
Just a quick question on that, we budget, we budgeted for what number?
The correct number, he, we knew.
Oh, we knew, okay.
They told us prior to the, so we were really happy that we were able to get that. We were hoping, it wasn't true. And some extra money.
Could delete it, but.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go down to item number 12, which is the approval of the policy change regarding our park fees, so. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm like, I'm trying to please everybody. Item number 10 is a resolution to make available the volunteer firefighters' working compensation coverage provided by the GL, Section 209 ILB. John, just for your information, I don't know if you read it or not, basically what it says is a volunteer goes to a neighboring district and starts doing their duty before an officer from the hosting district shows up, will be covering them for any injury or whatever. So it's recommended by the state, we talked to our, our workers' comp representative, he said, "Yes, you should adopt this," so.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Lachwood?
Yes.
Trusty Visser?
Yes.
Mayor Katsberg?
Yes. Okay, so now we're at 12, approving the policy, the change regarding the park fees, so we had discussed this. Were you guys able to read my email that I sent?
Yeah.
Regarding it? So it's number 12 on your motion sheet, and basically, it is an extra sentence that says, "No field reservation fees shall be forgiven unless an acceptable written in-kind maintenance agreement is substituted for that fee." So, so if an organization or group wants to use our fields without paying the fee, they have to enter into an agreement with the village in what they will do to help in the maintenance of those fields, and hold to that agreement. And as you know, that's the issue we're having with some users now.
With all users, or the ones that we exempt the fee for?
Only if there's a fee that's gonna be exempted or reduced. The fee's going to be exempted or reduced by.
Oh, no, I was asking about the issue, you said you were having issues.
Oh, oh, no, no, just with certain ones.
Just general.
Just certain ones.
Okay.
Any comments or questions, or did I get a motion for that?
I'll make the motion. A second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll on that one.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Lachwood?
Yeah.
Trusty Visser?
Yes.
Mayor Katsberg?
Yes. Item 13 is authorize levy of the unpaid inside the village water and sewer bills for 2015 to the June 2015 tax bills. So if you didn't pay your water and sewer bill, it just goes on your tax bill.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trusty Gifford?
Yes.
Trusty Lachwood?
Yes.
Trusty Visser?
Yes.
Mayor Katsberg?
Yes. Item 14 is authorize closure of North Temple from 12 o'clock on May 20th for the fire department's annual chicken barbecue.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second a motion.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Item 15 is designate Memorial Day on May 20th and Cruz on the Ave, June 21st, as village events for insurance purposes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 16, any of your favorite? Any comments from the board?
I've been waiting all month.
Jimmy and I met with the USDA, I told you at our work session that they were back and were interested in reducing the number of geese in our park. After some discussion with them, I conveyed the, the opinion of this board that we were not interested in having USDA come into a public park and do a population reduction.
Is this like, the gassing of the geese again?
Roundup, yep.
The roundup.
They, they had a lot of local partners in this, so I asked them who they were, and they are all private property owners. And I said, "Well, I hope by that you can see that a public space is not a place for this to take place." So they were, they were pretty okay with it. Reminder that the parade is not, next Wednesday at 6:30. And we're all gonna meet where we typically meet, and march the parade, and then the ceremony afterwards. I just wanted to give you the information that at next month's work session, McDonald Engineering will be presenting what it would look like if the village did a wastewater treatment plant on our own, and the financials for that.
Are we gonna get that report before that presentation?
Yeah, yeah, you'll get it electronically at a time. I wanted to tell you that I, I had sent a letter to the people who were involved in our home rehabilitation program that we did through shelter planning, the people whose projects were completed, and just to make sure they knew that that was a village program, and even though Shelter Planning had managed it, it was something that the village had sponsored and everything else. I got a very nice letter from one of the residents, I'm not gonna name names or anything, but super, super pleased with the whole program and what it did for her home and everything else, so. I don't know if any of you were able to attend last Friday's health fair, I know Tom sent Nancy.
I was way out of town.
But I would say it was the best one yet, it was great. I did, got, I did one of everything. We had a good employee turnout, we had, the fire department had a table, the police department had a table, and the food was excellent, so I just wanted to congratulate, Newey does. Nuey does the bull's share of the work putting that thing together. And she does a good job every year, and this one was great, so. Ken and I are going, taking a hike up to Illion in two weeks to take a look at their transport program for ambulance. And I'll report to you what we see and find out when we get back. And that'll just be the kickoff of the investigation to see if that makes any sense for the village of Scotia.
Can I maybe go with you if I can get free?
You're welcome, yep. What day is again, the date?
Wednesday, the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Where is Illion?
At ten o'clock.
It's about.
It's forty-five minutes from here, right on the Moloch River.
Okay.
And it's almost a mirror image of the village of Scotia. They've been doing transport for a number of years.
Yeah. They're right out of there.
If you're interested, Applebee's will be officially opening May eighteenth. I got an email for very important neighbors to attend the May sixteenth soft opening. You have to make a reservation, and it's five dollars. But you can do lunch or dinner. And it's basically a trial run of all their systems. But if you would like to participate in that, I'll forward the email to you if you want to have a lunch or dinner at Applebee's on May sixteenth. Reminder that the Flint House is having an open house program with a couple of different things. They have an archaeological dig. They're going to be talking about planting their room corn and flax, a tour of the Flint House that is May sixteenth, one to four. And everybody's glad you're sitting because our clerk treasurer, Maria Schmitz, will actually be taking a vacation next week with her family, traveling to a foreign country.
Uh-oh. Whoa.
They call it Mexico.
You're crazy.
Mexico?
Take this to Cuba.
I don't know what's happening here. It's the first time she's ever been out of the village of Scotia.
Now you're just embarrassing.
Just don't take the name truck.
That's not true, right?
See if they come back.
Yeah, right, exactly. Item seventeen is correspondence lien and special committee reports. Trusty Gifford?
We had a planning board meeting. They talked about McDonald's again, and what was the other one? Oh, the church at. Which we approved too.
Insurance, signage for the insurance agents.
Yeah. But I did want to tell you, I wish I'd gotten a chance when Lisa was here. But she's even more impressive with, in terms of being so sweet, but. We're not going to approve it until you do what you said you would.
Nuey's been telling me, yeah.
And we had a fire department meeting. It was relatively uneventful.
Thank you. Trusty Lockwood?
I have nothing to report. I just had a question for you about this, that one baseball league.
Thunder?
Yeah, well, did we make a decision or?
Yes, yeah, I reported back, I reported to the board last Tuesday that they supplied me with every single thing that we wanted. It shows that our 501(c)(3), they're directly connected to Little League. They're the travel arm of the Little League. I got all the documentation that I asked for finally.
Okay.
And so we approved the forgiveness of the fees, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yep. Trusty Rizzo?
All right, we had three committee meetings. Memorial Day Committee, we finally put the filing touches on the Memorial Day Parade. We had a Freedom Park meeting. I believe Kathy's got all the schedule all ready to go. And the groups are all set.
Do you know when that'll be released?
Oh, I got here someplace.
That's all right.
They're going to have a press conference. They didn't give me the date yet because they weren't sure yet because they're waiting for the printing. The first show is June seventeenth.
Really?
And they have a press conference week of the eighteenth. They really didn't get a date yet, but they're going to have a press conference and show all the shows they're going to have. We had our first car show meeting with Scotia Glenville Alks, which I think went very well. We're going to have a lot more volunteers, especially in the parking end of it and the registration end of it. And we should actually pick up some more cars for the car show. So that's working very well. We got another meeting coming up. And I believe that's all we ask.
Joe? I had several complaints. I heard several people complain this year about the parade not having things out in good time and that sort of thing. I know nobody can be a curtain manker, but. Is there any way next year we can get?
We're going to try to kick it off as quickly as we can.
Okay.
This year to see how it works. We have a couple more people that are helping us. So they'll be able to get the groups down the hill, down the side streets quicker.
I don't guess.
I mean, I mean for applications for the parade and inviting people to the parade.
The organization.
Oh, well, they.
Just, there is.
John was taking care of it, and he was.
He's not, though. Town of Glenville actually asked me if we're having a parade this year. At this point, right now, they don't know, they haven't gotten any confirmation that we're having a parade. They don't know.
I believe, I believe.
They don't know. They don't know if they should order flowers. I don't know who the grand marshal is. I don't know if I'm expected to make a speech. I don't know if I'm expected to do a resolution.
Never called.
Just absolutely nothing.
Wow.
He used to send out a form.
Yeah, he sent out a form and everything. We were told.
We didn't get, we usually get one here, and it asks if we're going to place a reef.
Right, right.
We didn't get that.
As far as I know, it's.
If you have any.
You've got to talk in my.
Get in with John, tell me. Something's got to come out because, I mean, if the town of Glenville and the village of Scotia have no idea what the expectations of us are, I mean, the rest of.
Yeah, I thought, to be honest with you, I thought he mailed that stuff out to you and the supervisor about the where the parade starts and that they need a reef and everything else. I'll follow up on that with him the next, I think we got a meeting just before the parade, so I will touch base with him. I'm sorry about that.